Counselor Ben-Gree has made a motion to reconvene. All in favor? Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you for supper.
Thank you. The sauce and Alex for going and getting. Okay, so, we are moving right along. So, other business, 7A, Festival of Lights. This is a review of the potential cost. So Heather Jakes brought it to our council in regards to working with them for the Christmas, Christmas extravaganza essentially. And council gave the support, except that we did ask for a background of roughly what we're looking at at cost. So we'll turn this over to Jeff.
Sure. And by the way, I spoke with Heather about 3:30. We had a good visit again.
Kate.
Okay, you have to speed on that.
Perfect.
Um, I always want to process these with, I know these got, this number got really big, not with any intention to kill the project, and I think we can definitely do something with them, but there's a lot of work the town has to put into these projects, a lot. And frankly, I have a concern right now of logistically being able to accommodate this group with their total ask, which is what I talked to Heather about today, for a couple of reasons. One is we have the campground expansion and the solar project still have to happen in this fall, this year. And right now, I only have one line. And I probably only have one line for another two or three weeks, because we started it this morning. So, logistically, it's a bit of a concern. Those trees on Main Street take a tremendous amount of time to put lights on.
Retired.
Leonard and Heather agreed, it's probably at least two hours a tree, and there's 44 of them. And so you start looking at 88 man-hours and bucket truck M&amp;M. So, what I wanted to talk about though was a couple of things. Leonard said they will try and get all the conduit tested, because we don't even know if, what percentage of it's even functioning. Um, we don't, none of it's wired, so none of the conduit obviously is wired in it. So nothing's wired into light standards. Nothing's ready to supply power. So they're gonna use both a fish and an addresser and see if they can get a deal for whether it's even usable, because then it might be to come off. And that's all we're concerned about. And I'm not suggesting start tearing up this thing to fix conduit. And then really was the Main Street trees. That's the big ticket, simply because of the time. It's just such a tremendous amount of time. And then we've got to add tops of buildings, which I didn't put a value to when I talked to Heather about, and I'll get to that in a minute. And then civic central rentals, so we're giving about $5,000 worth of fees to the civic center for the time they want it, the space they want. Now, the reason I had put anything on opportunity cost there is we really don't have a bunch of other people clamoring for the building during that time. And gymnastics isn't here for a lot of that time too, so they were gonna kind of work around gymnastics and try and make that work. And then display help is pretty minor, and skating is super minor in cash contribution. So when I talked to Heather today, we just had to talk about logistics. And what is, so we know what the ask is, and I basically said, what's the expectation? I mean, you asked for all this. If you don't get all of this, do we have a problem? Because we want to support this program. And she said, no, we know that we'll find, you know, it's gotta level out somewhere. So we talked about logistical issues, and we talked about the time and the cost. And one thing that Leonard's put out there that I put by here is, instead of this year, at least, lighting all the trees, what if we wrapped all the light standards? So we candy cane to all the poles? Because he says with those, they're uniform, it's quick.
Yep.
It's, you know, 20 minutes a pole.
Extremely effective.
Yeah, you start down low, you just go right, you don't have to reach around, you can reach around them with the bucket truck completely. And he says, we can do those really quick. And he says, I'd be happy to do that, versus having to string every single tree.
That would be pretty. Mike Schaefer does it every year.
Yeah, Mike does a really good job.
And it's neat, just on, just the one.
Yeah, it's very pretty.
And the other thing with that is, we do not have plugins and sensors, light sensors on the bottom of the poles for the conduit, but we do have them at the top.
Mm-hmm.
Because we currently plug our banner enhancers into the top. So they come on and off with the streetlights, that's what triggers them off and on. So he's saying, I could start and go up to the top and plug them in at the top in the same sensor and everything. So I pitched that to Heather, and I said, look, we'll still investigate the conduit, we'll still investigate the, how this can work, but is that a concession for you guys? Like, would that work? And she said they'd be very pleased if we could even do that. So if we can do the Christmas themed banners, the banner enhancers, and candy cane all the poles, she says they would be very pleased with that. One of the things on, I asked her to clarify this lighting of the tops of buildings, and she says, we've seen examples, and she admitted they might have either been Disneyland or Hollywood sets. But where there was, she's not sure if they were actual towns. So fair enough, where, when you have all these joint buildings that you put lights along the silhouette of them, on the, on the profile. When I talked with Leonard about that, he said, I can see why that's cool. But he says, I don't want to be drilling into everybody's sandstone on the tops of the buildings, or into whatever their fascia is.
Yeah.
He says, does that mean I'm up there putting fasteners into it? And I go split a cinder block on the top of their building, because I put a fastener into 100.
Or a sandstone.
Yeah, right.
Oh, my land.
So he's saying, I'm really nervous about that. And I don't blame him.
Yeah.
So what Heather said they would do as a committee, and they're meeting tomorrow night, by the way. He said, what she would propose to the committee is that the town would commit to streetlights, banners, and banner enhancers. They would go to the business owners and say, we'll provide you the lights if you will do it yourself. And see if they can get some uptake with the lights that they have in inventory. And that they would even, as a committee, come and help if the business owner would allow it. And then civic center rental, I have no problem with, I think it's, it's all good and fine. Display setup is fine. Leonard says it takes them about eight man-hours or so to set up and take down their big metal tree and get all the lights on it and do all that kind of thing. So, he says, we're fine to still help and do that, because they need the digger truck to lift everything, and then they need the bucket truck to operate. That, that's really what I want to throw out. If you, as a group, are still okay with us supporting even it, taking the big lighting of the trees out, you know, it's probably still a $25,000 touch for the town between labor and machine time.
We have a little budget.
To support the activity. Um, just so you know, I put it in my background, the labor was calculated at 40% discount, because that's kind of our margin on machine time, sorry, machine time was calculated at that. But, so we're still trying to refuel, wear and tear, oil, tires, all that stuff.
What have we budgeted for this?
We haven't budgeted anything, with the exception of the cash of $2,500 that we had in that contribution. But we obviously have budgeted our labor.
Carls.
And, and machine time, we actually, we, we, we accounted as an expense on our capital projects, but frankly, we just simply wouldn't account the expense.
Yeah.
For this. I mean, we have fuel here, and fuel there, and oil here, but, but by and large, we're not gonna count $50,000 of the machine time as an operational expense for Festival of Lights, is probably what we'll do, if we go ahead with it. So Heather seems good.
Kate.
She seems pleased if we do that. I just wanna, I didn't have a chance to talk to her until today, so I just wanted to bounce off people.
Counsel, your thoughts?
Jeff, where's all this stuff gonna be stored after season?
They have that sorted, apparently.
Yeah.
Have they?
Yeah.
Yeah, so have, so have.
She said they did at the last meeting.
I asked her, she felt she had sufficient inventory for all the poles and standards. She says they do. They took off all the lights, so the, at the Redington, we still have lights in all the great big trees.
Right.
But nothing 10 feet down. So they're leaving them in all those trees at 10 feet up. And she goes, I don't have the heart to ask Leonard to go remove them all, because she was, it'll take him 10 days, or a week, to remove them all. Because that's what it took to put them on.
Counselor Court.
Delay, delay.
I'm all for it, it attracts hundreds and hundreds of people. Everybody likes it, so it's something that the committee's behind, let's put it that way.
I'm guessing Counselor Barnes, you're happy about this one? Yeah.
Okay, Santa Claus.
Right. Fair.
Oh, oh, oh.
Do we need to put forward a recommendation at this point?
Um, probably, yeah, to expend those kind of resources on it, and we'll bring it back next week.
So I would make a recommendation to counsel that we support the project for the Festival of Light, and that administration bring us the hard costs that we need to account for.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, moving along. So the next one is our planning session. So this is when we go up to AUMA in, uh, last week of September. And we have our planning session with counsel the day before AUMA starts. Discussions on the agenda, I'm guessing everybody has read their agenda, they've seen it, they've seen, Jeff's just trying, Jeff and Jill are just trying to prepare, because they don't want us asking for something and then they didn't bring it. So they would kind of like all of our asks upfront, so that they can be prepared and give us all the information we can to come out with proper outcomes. Is there anything, any counselor at this table would like to bring forward, or change, or? No?
This was just off the mind of Jeff.
Right.
Kind of where we, I felt the discussion.
Yeah, it's good.
No, I think we're good. Perfect. Jeff, does that answer that?
Anything between now and then, if you're up in the night, particularly probably you, Counselor Silk, something?
Counselor Silk, yeah.
Oh, when you're sitting on the call.
With his bullets?
I'll be at 2:00, I never sleep anyhow.
Yeah, AUMA's booked, rooms are booked, everything's done.
Hey.
Jeff.
So.
Item, item number seven, the west area irrigation.
Yeah.
Can we discuss, uh, south Etna irrigation line with the county?
Are you talking their potable water line?
Yeah.
Yeah, so not an irrigation, but.
Okay.
Yeah, their potable water line.
And how?
We can discuss it under the intermunicipal part, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Counselor Silk?
So Jeff, under that same item, you have C, long-term extension. Are you talking about just the west area? Because at one point in time, there was discussion with the Etna irrigation of doing some irrigation projects along the east side as well.
Yeah, so when I wrote this, my thought was, what can we do long-term with that line? Absolutely, we can talk about, we had designed the community irrigation line that it could come up the hill.
Right.
To do temple, town square, all those kind of things as well. So we could kind of have a broader look at what kind of capital we want to start looking at on those types of extensions, for sure.
Right. And I think it also runs behind the junior high school.
It does, yes. We're using it for the soccer park and the junior high right now.
Right.
We tapped into it when we did the new soccer park.
So, that, Mayor, maybe a question that I want to know then. When, we had a presentation by the irrigation district that said to us that all the residents that were on that side of the road could have also access to those irrigation line. I mean, Maxine had that, so I don't really know how we go about it if something like that was of interest to those residents around there.
Don't we have to apply?
Would machines tap in?
I don't really know.
Machines, I believe, are, I don't know where they tap in, I'd have to look. And some of those parcels have irrigation assignment licenses, and some don't.
Okay.
Um, so I just, but the town, we have a lot of irrigation licenses, particularly with the new Etna and Levitt amalgamated organization. There's a lot of Levitt irrigation licenses that are terribly underused now. So I think we have 1,700 acre feet or something, maybe a couple times.
Yeah, because I know that the parcel of land that was Maxine's is now again under irrigation.
Right. Yeah, so there are some, but we can look at whatever infrastructure, what areas of the world.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Jeff, on that?
No, again, send me something if you think something on it. By all means, we just gotta start getting that ready.
Okay, moving right along to C. We have that, and I'm gonna butcher this word.
Caros.
The caros, blanket exercise. Um, that is on Tuesday, September the 17th, at 6:00 PM. Town hall, right here in council, council chambers. Um, the question was, how many of us would like to go to this? And I'm, sign me up. I've taken that off, so that I can go. I would love to be a part of that.
I've got meetings that night across the way here.
Okay.
At 7:00. It's a two or three hour thing.
That's what it says, two to three hours.
I can't sit on the floor that long.
Last time I did it, they, and again, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's like an hour and a half and we're done, but.
So I could come at 6:00 and leave at 7:00 if I have to.
September 16th.
I'll be honest, it doesn't work relatively early.
Okay.
How it's set up, it doesn't work.
Then I won't come at all then, because I got meetings at 7:00.
Mayor, sorry, you had something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to be there.
Oh, Kate, is there anybody else from council that would like to go to this? And is this something?
So we've invited the county council, school division, all the schools, ecclesiastical groups in town. We'll have some Blackfoot elders there. So we're trying to get almost 50 people there.
Wow.
So your cap is 60.
Okay.
So we're trying to make sure it's more effective if you have.
Yes.
Thirty, 35 to 55 people or so.
And so a question that was asked to me, um, yesterday in regards to this is, so will council submit for this? Is this an extra meeting? Is this?
It's an extra meeting, yeah.
So, do we need, um, I.
Motion.
We will have a meeting before this starts, so will we need a motion at our next meeting for this?
I don't know that we've been getting motions for every meeting charged per diem for. We have when you've gone to like a conference or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I probably wouldn't.
Okay, just, I just wanted to check.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask Jeff a little bit about this, because it's, it's intrigued me, you know, my, my mind says, yes, I want to go. But physically.
You're gonna be there?
I'm just, it might be gonna be sitting on the floor.
No, there will not be, uh, the physical requirements are very, very mild. You'll be standing for a little bit of it, and then sitting.
They have chairs?
Yeah.
It's a circle. You will have a circle.
Okay, all right. Then you can count, count me in then.
The blanket.
We'll never be sitting on.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
The blanket will be in a center of a circle.
Okay, I really want to be there.
Okay, so, so, so far, we've got Counselor Barnes, Counselor Silk, myself, Counselor Drew.
I need to check on my schedule.
Absolutely. And Counselor Court is away at another town meeting.
Bustle with her.
Absolutely. And Counselor Ben-Gree.
Now, I'll go only as an observer.
Yeah, come and observe, that works good too.
Because I cannot get down on the floor.
Again, you won't, you won't be asked.
No.
Down on the floor, so you stand.
Okay.
And then, as the exercise goes on.
Wow.
You're asked to leave and sit in a circle.
Correct.
So I could observe for, and then leave?
Yeah, you could. You could just come and observe from the start.
So, so essentially, a full council then? And then Counselor Court will leave to his meeting?
I'm just coming for an hour to observe and then leave.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not submitting anything.
Yeah, sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment. I think it's more important that as many of us.
Agreed.
Can be there, should be there.
Agreed.
Because of what we're trying to accomplish with the reconciliation and everything, we need to be there.
It's very important.
Yeah.
Okay, moving along to 7D, Atco Gas franchise. So this is reviewing the franchise amount. Jeff had brought up the fact that if we're happy to stay at where it's at, if we are interested in changing, changing groups, um, Jeff, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, this is something you have discretion to amend every year. I have a really compelling reason to amend.
Right.
Uh, but by all means, it's within your discretion to have that discussion.
Mayor, go ahead.
Personally, I would put to a recommendation that we keep the 15% gas franchise from Atco as is.
Agreed.
Yep.
Uh, Counselor Silk, did you have any?
Nope, I was just gonna make the recommendation the mayor did, so she's already ahead of the game.
Any other questions?
I don't want to have to pay more if I don't have to, so I.
So all in favor? Thank you.
Exactly.
All right, so now we're gonna talk about.
Exactly.
Sorry. So moving along. Now we're going to talk about business arising from the delegations we had. So let's talk about the Kirsten Handy Bus. So, on that, it was my understanding that we weren't now going to be putting the crosswalk in because of all the information that we had been given. I just thought I would double check on that. That was my understanding, so that this isn't going to be an issue now.
This still came up after, it's simply wasted, free up spaces on the avenue, irrespective of that.
Okay. So, I personally thought, um, they brought up some interesting ideas that I hadn't thought about, and I personally feel that maybe keeping it right where it's at is what's best, because we know the town is gonna grade those seat, those streets, and we don't want to have people in the back not able to get in. That's not the point of this. None of us, that wasn't our intention in this. So, um, anybody other, yep.
Agree.
Yep.
So.
I, I'm totally agree, because I was thinking, as many times I see that the snow hasn't been cleared yet in that, and I hadn't even thought about that.
No.
So I'm glad we had them there to explain it.
Absolutely, so thank you.
Because it changed my whole opinion towards this.
Perfect. Thank you to the Handy Bus for coming and clarifying a few things.
Yeah.
So, um, then we had the Kirsten Support Services, them coming because we requested more information on the recycling. I thought that was fantastic. I have been following the recycling for a bit, and I've, I've heard that it is changing, and so.
Very rapidly.
But I also, sorry?
Very rapidly.
So I also felt that, um, I respected, um, Kim Flickinger when she said she felt the most appropriate was, she was in a holding pattern. She felt that no serious changes should happen, that we should just hold. I think that is, um, I think that's valid. Mayor?
I'm just wondering, Jeff, is Kim advocating for us to have a new bale or not?
Well, they've quite, had done really well at keeping that thing going for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
This is an interesting discussion, because we, we have on the one hand, where we feel we need to divert as much from the landfill as possible. All right, we feel we have this kind of moral of environmental obligation. But at the same time, and from Kim's point of view, she's, it's a program for her. This is a means to an end.
Right.
Recycling isn't the end here. It's a means to another end.
Yeah.
And it's working for them. So, uh, some of you may recall, a few years back, we were talking about significantly ramping up.
Mm-hmm.
And they were the group saying, hold on, we're not sure we can even accommodate you from a labor point of view, from a logistics point of view. And then this whole market thing has just added another wrench. So where it's on our discussion for the 23rd, I think it'll change what we feel about putting a $300,000 building over their heads, or, you know, doing anything like that. I think we really ought to look at that closely.
It'll be cost effective, right?
Absolutely.
And, you know, I start to think about things, we'll talk about it on the 23rd, that we simply take that polyurethane foam spray and spray that whole building and seal it right up and make it as tight as possible, and that's what we do up there for $20,000 for the next five years.
Right.
Now it's warm, and it's sturdy, and it's, it's working okay, right? And instead of entertaining, we were, we were looking at land in industrial area, building a massive building, and.
Yeah, I remember that.
And, uh, so, it's just such a tricky thing, and the only other thing Kim didn't really bring up is if we need to look as a community of limiting what we're taking. So, less for example, you can't do glass anymore.
Yeah.
Which they brought up.
Yeah, so here you go. My sister was just telling me that they're doing a new education program there, certain, there's two things that have been eliminated from the curve, even though they just rolled out this massive recycling program.
Right, right.
But, yeah.
Mayor?
Regarding the bale.
Yeah.
So is that something that unless it breaks down, we won't worry about it?
Well, once it breaks down, I think it's down, you know, it's probably.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to see, do they?
I'll get some capital costs for a new bale from them before we go to Etna.
Counselor Silk?
But is that even worth it?
While you're doing that, Jeff, you might want to talk about a, see what it costs for a trailer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A new recycling trailer.
And, and I know it's still public, and I think Kim would know where I'm coming from. That one frustrates me a bit, because I was here when we got the new trailer. That was the trailer they wanted.
Yeah.
I know.
You know, we worked in consultation with them, oh, if we get this, and we'll put this on the side, and we can get all the bins, and then immediately when it got here, it was like, oh, this was a terrible idea, we need a new trailer.
I know.
We went to them and said, tell us what trailer we want.
I see.
We had insurance money from the last one that helped with a lot of the costs, it didn't pay off, but we paid a good chunk. And then immediately, it was kind of regretted. And I get it, it's a small trailer. So we need to, we need to look at that too. We need to do something different.
Counselor Barnes?
Um, this, this recycling thing, the, the environmental people out there have been pushing, 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 pushing. I think now they've come to realize that they've pushed too far, and there's not right now a viable solution to recycling, what to do. We're limited right now until they come up with some alternatives that are gonna be better for us, and those alternatives cost a lot of money. You know, and, and I've always thought, then, and I'm, maybe in this regard, I'm not environmentally friendly, but incineration is, are people doing it now?
They can filter it too.
Pardon me?
They can filter the incineration.
Exactly. And maybe we need to be looking at that, that possibility.
There's buildings in Hart and Calgary that actually use their garbage to heat the building.
I mean, okay, now, case in point.
Sorry.
You've got a wood pile there that gets incinerated on almost a weekly or two-week basis, right? Nothing is filtered there. And so, and lots of people are doing it. So I think maybe we should be looking at that type of thing.
I truly believe that this is a bigger issue than.
It is.
Than we can handle in this moment.
It's a big issue, you're right. It's a big issue, you're right.
This is a federal and provincial.
Agreed, agreed. So.
Okay, move on.
Mayor, and then Counselor Silk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The thing that I was thinking of when you were talking is that, yeah, why are we doing it? But remember that she gets $35 a ton for all what she diverts. And a landfill, as Counselor Silk would know very well, has limited capacity. And above a certain capacity, we have to truck our stuff to Lesbridge. And Lesbridge is now becoming extremely picky at what we'll accept. So sooner or later, it becomes a serious problem for us regionally. So as long as I can divert
We do it.
tons of material, I'm happy to do so.
Yeah.
It helps us as a regional waste authority.
Counselor Silk?
Two things. One, with respect to recyclables, there is a new facility that will be awarded somewhere in Southern Alberta that will actually take all the waste and burn it and make it into energy.
Yes, see what.
Say what.
We still don't know when.
We are, remember. Well, are we still?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
Yes, we are.
We are.
So if that comes on stream in the County of Vulcan or somewhere around Alderside or whatever, I'm assuming that that will help with some of the waste material. Two, just to talk to the mayor's point, actually, we've been very fortunate or very good. We haven't had any problems with our amount that we can put in the landfill. So we've been well within our allotted amount for a number of years now.
Which is wonderful because we talk about the time when there was a hill catastrophe in town. And for two years, we had horrible difficulty staying within the tonnage that was allowed.
Counselor Bengry?
When we talk about the payback to the, to the association, what kind of money are we talking?
$35 per ton.
Per ton?
Yeah.
That couldn't be increased?
No.
Okay.
Are you talking about the tonnage or the amount?
The amount paid back to them. For what reason?
Why wouldn't it be increased?
Well, if, if it's, if it's saving our regional landfill.
Well, yeah, but.
Would we not want to increase the payment a little bit? A little bit more?
They cannot produce more, she told us that they're at full capacity.
You're aggressive, yeah. I've got other questions after.
It's not the Chief Mountain Regional Solid Waste that reimburses them. It's the province or whomever that reimburses them. It's not us.
Recycling.
So all the paperwork is done by the Handicap Association and submitted to the province. It's not submitted to us.
Okay.
To the regional authority and they get reimbursed. So we have no say in that.
Counselor Barnes?
So I'm trying to discern what she was saying about our cardboard. We have the best bales, from what I'm hearing. And they are still shipping it out. But we have a lot of it up there, right?
Have you been up there yet?
Well, I know. They have a great wall of cardboard up there.
Well, that's a whole problem.
How often do they ship and what, how much do they ship when they do?
Well, she said that's the problem right now is they're trying to find the market.
Yeah, they don't have a market for it right now. Is that what she's saying?
That's what she said.
Ultimately, they could build a wall around the town if they need to. Blocks the wind.
A cardboard wall?
Let's not, because we'll have to call Brad on that garbage. But, yeah, essentially. Okay, moving along. So any questions? Any questions arising from anything we've talked about so far? Seeing none. We're going to go to correspondence. So 9A Municipal Affairs.
After the fact?
Thank you for that late acknowledgement.
Yeah.
It's always after the.
Jeff, go ahead.
So it's a bit vague because they're talking about how it's kind of advanced and before the budget. But we're only $13,000 less than we were last year on MSI. That's partially because our population's up since last year. So we did the census. So we mitigated that fairly well.
Good.
Perfect.
Doing a municipal census was the right timing.
Good timing.
In this case, it works, yeah.
Okay, so B is the Canadian Union of Postal Workers. They are seeking our support.
Before you move on to that, I have a question. I'm still on the MSI. So there's two things here. It says, so the MSI capital allocation for Carson is 500, that's the interim. 540, and then we'll get another after that?
It's a capital. It, it's the operational.
Right, well, there's two.
And then there's a gas, and then there's a gas rebate.
Okay. That's what the GTF is, is the gas?
The gas tax fund is separate.
Okay.
The federal.
They're just announcing, that's double what it was last year.
Oh.
We got doubled up on that one. Most communities did.
Okay.
There's a bunch of money left in that fund.
So this is, the total that we're getting is like 744,000?
Uh, from, I don't know where you grabbed. Yes, that's correct. 745,168 dollars plus the tax fund.
Plus the tax fund, okay. So we're about a million dollars.
That's right, about a million.
That's good.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Counselor Silk, go ahead.
I'd like to make a recommendation to administration that we draft a letter of support to the Canadian Union of Postal Workers. And they're a recommendation or their request for support for local post offices, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
All in favor? Okay, moving along to C, Cindy Helum, Alberta Transportation Meeting Invitation.
I don't have anything pressing, only because these are just the two, a lot of you just, they're the two local guys.
Right.
And we can meet with them at any time. They're not that difficult to meet with.
Okay, Mayor?
Can I ask something? Jeff, regarding 9th Avenue, so what's the status of our conversation at this point?
I'm waiting for them to come back to us.
So we still do not know?
No, not as far as negotiating the kind of different arrangement, we don't.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Barnes?
Jeff, where are we with possibly still developing a off-street over here on the highway for our industrial land over there? We talked sometime about having a
So Transportation's position is that it's development-driven and therefore it's our responsibility to pay for it.
Right.
Yeah, and of course, they take that same approach locally. It's hard to get after their methodologies, but, yeah, they consider it development-driven and they're not going to financially participate.
Counselor Silk?
Yes, just clarification on the 9th Avenue. So they graded it, they took out all the potholes. Is that it for this year?
For this year until they, the budget comes out next week.
Right.
And so they said, that's something we can do until we at least know what we have for budget.
100%.
But they're amenable to the notion of actually doing something concrete or asphalt. Actually fixing it so it isn't an actual secondary highway and not a donkey trail?
Chucky.
Not their words, but they would be willing to negotiate that a little bit. But they were just trying to appease us in the meantime.
To the budget.
Okay.
Well, it is fixed up somewhat.
Still the nasty rains make potholes again.
Well, it's a nicer donkey trail.
Okay. Counselor Bengry?
Motion to go close session.
Perfect. All in favor?